Didn't you?
I didn't.
No, they were.
Okay. Rich, do you have anything on the minutes?
Yes, I wanted to add a couple of sentences. After the sentence, I'm gonna give this a copy to David so he doesn't have to scribble. Madly appreciate it. After the sentence, the board would also include the line common district, et cetera, et cetera. This is at the bottom of the first page. Starting in paragraph that says, "Rich Brown asked the board to consider several questions about the process for writing the housing chapter. Rich said he would provide his answers at the next meeting. And then Rich also offered to ask planning mailing list for housing chapters from similar sized towns." Yeah, we did talk about that a bit, I think I remember. Yeah, that's...
And I contacted the RPC. I was supposed to, um...
That's right, you did volunteer.
I did. It's really technical about the volunteer thought. Add that, although I don't think it's really germane to anything, so...
Yeah, well, okay, anything else? Okay, I moved a week's amendments as amended by Rich, Vicky.
Well, second thought.
Okay, all in favor?
So, Tim, do you need to designate somebody as an alternate?
Um... Oh, yeah, we can do... So, I need, yeah, designate an alternate as a regular member.
But Rich is the only alternate now, so...
Yep, that's right, so I'll designate Rich as the place of honor.
Thank you.
Okay, so what, what's people's, um, choice here? Do we wanna, do we wanna look at, um, feedback for the solar?
Yes.
I think we should.
And we need to put a closure on that.
All right, I will pass. Here is a paper copy of everything that I have received to date. I love to pretty much format it as the, um, the folks who sent it in.
One more?
Yes, please.
Whoa, it's gotten heavier since last time.
Yeah, I think, David, you said there were ten, like, ten people?
I didn't count exactly, but they're, they're close to ten.
Yeah, so do we just wanna read this now, is that what we...
I'd like to.
Okay.
I really wish we'd received this before, so we'd have to spend time reading it.
My apologies, but I was getting feedback up until yesterday afternoon, so I didn't have a whole lot of time to put it all together. Who is BB? Give me a second. Just off of Baker Hill, over by the Hanover line.
Ben Barrows.
Thank you.
I think he's an engineer at Crowell.
Yeah.
Well, a broad range here.
Luckily, they're all consistent.
Yeah.
You mean, from, from the one that says, "No, absolutely not," to the one that says, "No, because it's way too restrictive?"
Yeah, so how do we wanna do this? Do you wanna, you wanna go right through it and discuss some of the points in here?
I think that that's what we owe the public, is to actually, um, spend time with their comments and, um...
Right.
And then maybe at the end of each comment, say what you personally feel we should take forward and what we shouldn't, and...
Right.
And then hopefully we can be consistent, 'cause I, I think so many different points of view are represented here. Makes me feel like we put together a pretty middle-of-the-road proposal, because there's comments on both sides, and some people that support what we presented. So, I, I think not everyone is ever gonna be happy, but, um, you know, I, I...
Right.
I, I think we did a really good job, and I'm really happy that we got this much input.
Right, delighted we got this feedback, yes.
Yeah, and it's, for the most part, it's constructive. People are talking from their experience and recommending, and, uh, you know, "Forget it, folks, I'm not voting for any of this," is fairly, you know, small. There's only two of them, so that's, that's good.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of, there's a lot of discussion about the height, obviously. It seems like a lot of people are saying eighteen feet is maybe not tall enough.
Well, no, they're not saying it's not tall enough, but it, um, you know, for other manufacturers than, like, you know... And eighteen feet is what Hanover chose, that's where it came from. It's actually not arbitrary. It's based on the experience in a town that's done resolarized projects and, um, has, you know, really pushed, the Energy Committee there has really pushed. So, eighteen feet was, uh, you know, not random at all.
Right.
Um, so I think, actually, I'll speak to eighteen feet. I think it's a good balance for those that said, "Oh, my gosh, it's too tall," and others that said it didn't. I mean, if, they need to go to the zoning board for relief of the eighteen feet, they can do that. But as a rule keeping it like that, I think is, is okay. And I really don't feel comfortable with allowing solar installations, solar energy systems being as high, as high as the structures that we otherwise allow. Because I think that these are accessory to those other structures, and that by making them thirty-five feet tall, that they don't look accessory anymore.
Right.
So, that's...
Well, it sounds like eighteen feet would allow most everything that's out there now. And as you say, if, if somebody wants to do something taller, they can get a special exception.
Or if we have other, I mean, consistently, if, you know, have other, um, structures that, you know, consistently are too big, then we need to change the zoning. Um, I mean, I, I really feel strongly that we need to do that, if it's not gonna allow the technology.
That, that's a question that I had heard more generally. If we move forward with whatever we move forward with, and, uh, subsequent experience shows, or, gosh, we're getting requests every month, or, you know... We put on the limit of eighteen feet and really we need, it needs to be nineteen and a half or something. What, what is involved in changing the, the ordinance once it's enacted?
Well, it would just be another zoning amendment, which we wrote, you know, like, sometimes we write down, yeah.
But that's not that terrible. I mean, we have the same issue with respect to the twenty KW. You know, you get, people say that's not gonna be enough, if you have to charge your electric truck and...
Right, yeah, and then other, some people in here said twen- twenty was, or forty was more than needed.
Oh, yeah, yeah, forty, excuse me, yeah, like, so, the, the question is, uh, if, um, if we stick with forty and then subsequently it turns out that, well, a lot more people are using a lot more electricity than... How tough is it to, to change that number? It sounds like it's not terrible.
Right, 'cause the zoning, zoning evolves, for sure, I mean, it does evolve, like, I think...
So, to Vicky's point, though, i- if somebody came in with a different tractor that is twenty feet tall, or twenty-three feet tall, or whatever, what, what, how would they get that, is there a way they could get that approved, or is it...
Well, without seeing, having an ordinance written, I can't, you know, there, either, there, there are two ways of doing this. One, you, you write in a special exception that allows the zoning board to, um, under certain circumstances, um, allow it. Or it has to become a variance, and...
So, why couldn't they dig a hole and set it in the hole? You know, if it was a couple of feet?
Right, well, that's, there's...
Yeah, that's the...
So, I think there's, I think there's two answers. First off, Vicky, I find it very persuasive that, that Hanover has found eighteen feet to work.
So far.
So far.
I don't know of anybody who's come for a height, um, problem.
Right, so I find that very persuasive and comforting that we're not going off and just saying, "Well, we looked at the spec sheet on a solar reflect, and it looks like eighteen feet, and we're just..." I mean, so that's, that's very persuasive, and I, I, I feel okay about that. I think, to David's point, I think, um, we can write in special exception language to say that the zoning board can grant, bump de bump, accommodations for specific circumstances that don't violate the spirit. So, if somebody did need twenty and a half feet, the zoning, the zoning board could say, "Well, yeah, sure." I mean, what are you doing? How big? What, and, and, um, that, that would be the escape hatch, and I think the same, um, maybe we wanna do the same thing on the capacity. I think Deirdre Willis note about the forty kilowatts is barely enough.
Yeah, I wonder how big's her house?
At least at three thousand square feet is what they're heating, right?
Yeah, and that, and that's all electric.
Right, it's all...
Well, that's a, that's a pretty big house.
That's a very big house.
So, I mean, you know, like, don't build your house so big, folks.
Well, so, so, I mean, this, this is why we get paid the big bucks, to make these decisions.
I know, I know.
She does make, I think, a good point to trying to retrofit, you know, electric and heat pumps into older houses that may not be built efficiently.
Not as tight, yes.
Um, you know, could require, um, you know, more if they were trying to supply all their energy needs.
Okay, well, I mean, just, just to go back, I mean, people, the first step is weatherization and tightening up your house, so that you're not wasting energy, no matter how you produce it.
Right, right.
And, um, you know, so, I, I hope people use that kind of roomwork to make investments that way.
Well, maybe, maybe we should go back to the eighteen feet. It sounds like we're all pretty much in agreement that eighteen feet is, is okay.
I mean, I, I don't feel that comfortable with it. I mean, only from the standpoint that, you know, it works with solar reflect, but, you know, there are other, other...
You think it should be higher?
I, I don't really know. I, I guess I would be interested to...
Well, we could put a special exception.
To talk to somebody, I mean...
Well, my coworker came up with the eighteen, and he's, you know, a thousand percent, I mean, we, in Hanover, we do everything to try to get stuff, so it was intended not to inconvenience anybody. And it's, it was just the experience, and that, that was a, I mean, pretty much everyone was consistent about, yeah. And I would say the eighteen feet, I mean, may buy us votes, because there's a limit on the height. So, I mean, to the people who don't wanna have them, I mean, you know, what Ray Clark was like, eh, they're ugly, and, um, you know... But at least that gives him some sense about, well, it's not gonna be any higher than eighteen feet.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking, if we can, if that's something we can agree on, we can kind of put that, we can be done with that and go on to other stuff.
Right, so, so, Rich, do, do you feel strongly enough about your uncertainty that we need to do some research?
Um, I might just do some on my own.
Well, call Rob Housman. You know him.
Yeah, well, I, oh, yeah.
'Cause he's the guy who basically, you know, he's in charge of, like, implementing our energy program. And we've got the Energy Committee, but, or the Sustainable Hanover. And he's the one that chose eighteen. So, I would just call him directly and, and say, "Rob," you know, and speak to him about it, and ask if, since that's gone in, has anybody, you know, has it been a problem? Or does he foresee any problems? 'Cause he's right on top. He sees every building permit that comes into our office, and, um, tries to, you know, help people, and his, his MO is to facilitate solar. So, I would just, you can save yourself maybe a lot of, a lot of, um...
Well, maybe we can say, tend, tend to be, we will say eighteen feet unless Rich comes up with some...
Yeah, and I would say too, it's not our... Yeah, and I would say too, it's not arbitrary at all. It comes from a great deal of experience with installations and a variety of situations that fall across another town, close by.
I mean, I guess the reason I have some concern is because I'm looking to expand my solar. And every company that I've talked to, the guys selling them do not know how tall the damn things are.
Really?
I say, well, how tall is it gonna be, oh, well, uh, you know, I'm not really sure, da, 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 I'll I'll have to get back to you on that. So it's like.
Yeah, well, it's high, high to base.
And I know that they're, you know, the racking systems have changed and and they're trying to do at least, one of the companies I was working with is trying to do single pedestals, you know, they're putting, you know, twenty-four panels on a single pedestal.
So it'd be a fixed, right?
It would be fixed, but on.
Cool, I mean.
But it's like.
I like the idea of building in some flexibility so that, you know, if uh if there's a company that comes out that has something that's eighteen foot, six inches or whatever it is, that people have the ability to come in and say, hey.
Right, yeah, and the other thing is, um, you know, in the years to come, hopefully not too many years, the technology's gonna change and these all may get smaller and smaller too.
Could be.
Hopefully, so, yeah.
So I think we're, I think we're we're close and I'm I'm happy with fifteen as long as.
No, eighteen.
Or eighteen, excuse me, as long as.
Okay.
It seems like it's gonna work.
As long as it's, it's based.
Yeah.
Well, okay, and that's the point, that's not arbitrary, because a lot of people put, oh, that's an arbitrary number. And actually, it's not just between fifteen and twenty, it's actually a real number.
Right, I mean, it's, um, it it sort of sounds like an arbitrary number.
It does, it does.
So, right, so that's the other thing that as we put forth the narrative to go with this, we say a big town to our south uses eighteen and if we if we say this doesn't have a problem, and everybody that wants to can can do it.
Yeah, or we can say eighteen feet, two inches, that wouldn't sound arbitrary.
Well, I don't understand, because they're mounted in a concrete footing and so you just can adjust like what the level of that is.
Sometimes you can't do that, I mean, like, you have rules about if you have a river or stream nearby and how high things have to be and.
Um and, I mean, and when it tips up, you gotta have it, you know.
You gotta have a.
Right, yeah, but you can just put more, more concrete in, it's been my experience. Or you use some kind of helical system that anchors it without having to worry about the flotation.
Right, well, okay, let's, yeah, let's say that eight, you know, we're kind of like eighteen feet and we can.
Definitely follow it.
And we can put that behind us and we can do all the other stuff.
And to to your idea about having a wiggle room, if we're gonna put in a wiggle room, I'd rather not have it go to the zoning board. I mean, that's a great idea, but um I would rather keep it at twenty than go to the zoning board and have them go for a variance showing hardship and, you know, real, real heartache if they have to go above twenty if if that's how we wanna come out, because I'd rather use going to the zoning board for something like the capacity question that's really based and that would get some people thinking about what are their real needs because of their house. If somebody's building a ten thousand square foot house and wants to power it, great, but do they really need, you know, should it be all solar or, you know? And and then the group of five can decide.
Yeah, okay.
But that's, we'll, we'll get to that one, I guess, soon.
Okay. So, one, one thing, one question I had, Ross McIntyre was talking about, um the, I think he's saying here that there would not be any need for more like three phases, because I know, Vicky, you were talking about three phase at one point, you know, if it goes beyond the third one, but, you know.
Those are commercial installation.
Ross is saying here that it wouldn't, I think he's saying it wouldn't be, so I don't know.
You do need, you need bigger power lines.
All you need to do is go into Fairleigh, look at the new system being put in just south or just actually behind the Fairleigh Drive-In. And you look at the poles going down, heading south. They're all set up for three phase, they're all brand new, they went in in the last year.
Right.
So when you have commercial installation, that is the case, so it's only the case for a large thing, not for what we're talking about for individ- you know, kind of small solar energy system.
Yeah, because Ross is saying higher poles and thicker cable being required if solar electric, solar production increases is a product of propaganda circulated by those wishing to sell essentially generated electricity. So maybe he doesn't realize the three phase part of it.
Well, that's only for those large installations, the commercial ones we're talking about.
Net metered, you know, type installations, the small ones, those don't require it, it's just the larger.
And I think way back, we we were talking about scenic roads and we were saying, well, it might not, it might be nice not to have three phase power on the scenic roads, I think that's why the driving force of what we said.
Well, I'd like, I'd like that, whoever brought up the question, does that mean there's access or visible from? And let's talk about that.
Yeah, we'll get there, okay.
Because I think that was a really good point.
So on this first page, there's also some discussion about camps or something, having, I guess, DC syst- twelve and twenty-four volt systems.
Right, I would just assume not have a special case for them, that I can't imagine that um if they're roof mounted or their vehicle mounted, we don't care.
Exactly.
It doesn't address it and if you've got a twelve or twenty-four volt system, you're gonna have an array that, you know, maybe it's as big as this table. And you're gonna fit and so, you know, my sense is we don't need to make a special carve out.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like it.
You know, I, if it's on your, on your vehicle, it's not a a permanent, it's not fixed on the ground, so therefore it's not a structure. So, I mean, I'm not gonna say that there won't be, maybe some people that will get registered vehicles and put their solar on, you know, whatever. But I just don't think that that's how most people would do it and um it's great if somebody has it on their camper van and can charge batteries, it's awesome.
I would look at it as a zoning administrator, the the only odd part is if you're using a RV as a dwelling unit, um then it becomes, it it has to follow all the zoning regulations. So if you're basically living out of your RV or you have somebody living in a camper on your property, it becomes a dwelling unit. But again, if it's on the roof, it's, again, to me, just, there's no difference between that and a roof mounted. And if you have it mounted on the ground, then it's an accessory and it has to follow the rules. So I don't think there needs to be a carve out, I think it, it's, you know, everything is covered.
Right, makes sense.
And we should pass along a suggestion that the grader and plow trucks run on batteries to the select board and energy committee. Well, it's not the planning board's job.
Right.
And. It'll be a long time before you have it.
I know.
Enough energy in a.
Well, it has the weight though, all the batteries.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe, I don't know, that new Lightning, that new Ford Lightning is still on it, but anyway.
Somebody's got a Rivian truck and kind of red one, I saw it go by my house.
Really?
Yeah, I don't know who was in it, but um it's boxy, I'm surprised, it doesn't look very young.
You know, must they cost?
I don't know.
It's like over a hundred thousand dollars.
Whoa.
Well, you can imagine people in this town might have that, but um I was surprised at how boxy it was.
I'd like to see one, I've seen a picture.
I I I didn't know what it was and so I did see what it was, but.
Yeah.
Well, we'll leave it, who's that guy who's doing the solar, you know, vehicle, Henry Higgs?
Oh, yeah.
He'll, he'll, he'll.
He'll update us, yeah.
Yeah, so, um, on to the next one.
Second page.
So, yes, not on the common, I mean, that's a concern, um, that's been expressed a couple times. There is that other resident in town who also said not in historic districts.
Right.
So, I mean, if we wanted to pencil that in, just.
And then there was the other person who said, well, if it was behind the building in the the village districts.
Yes.
So, I mean, I think the concern is visual. And I thought, okay, so if it's behind the building, I don't want it in the front yard and, you know, there, but, yes. You know, and hopefully Tammy could do roof mounts, I mean, she's got the freaking, sorry, she's got the generator in her front yard and is that any more attractive than a a solar tracker would be? Not, not to my sensibility, but.
Right, that's interesting, I don't like the generator nearly as, I don't, I don't find the generator nearly as surprising.
Oh, well, surprising or attractive, I mean, you know, but that's, you and I might have different tastes and that's fine.
And that's right, we're not, we're not the taste.
It's just like if somebody can put a generator in their front yard, I don't know why they can't put a solar tracker or something, that that's uh, it needs to be more consistent.
But the generator's certainly a lot smaller than a tractor.
Yeah, lower to the ground.
I mean, there's a new tracker, first house in Hanover on the right, on Route ten.
Yes.
And it's right next to their garage and it's like, oh, wow, those are quite large.
Well, the Cullenbergs have two new trackers and I was surprised to see those and they, they're of course downhill from the roads, they don't look so big.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it sounds like a lot of people are concerned about the the common and so.
Yep.
I mean, in my mind, um, I wouldn't like to see them in front of the house, you know, right next to the green.
Right.
But I think a lot of the houses on the backside of the common have quite a bit of land that goes.
In the back, yeah.
And I think, as you said, Vicky, they, if you couldn't really see them, I think that'd be fine back there.
Yeah, well, and so are we, we're just talking about ground mounted, right?
Right.
And we're saying that anybody on, in any historic district or on the common could put something on their roof, correct? And so all we're talking about is the ground mount.
Yeah, so maybe somewhere we should have some restriction on in front of the houses on the on the common.
Well, what about in the north side, aren't we?
Yeah, because that's an historic district.
You might wanna look at, I guess, some of the the overlay districts for those then, because you have Grantbrook runs right in the backyards of everyone on the south side of Dorchester Road. And then when you're looking at the, on the north side of the common, um, a lot of those houses back into wetlands also.
Really?
Okay, well, I gotta say, I mean, if you can put a garage, as was done right on the corner of Dorchester and and Baker Hill, you should be able to put a solar tracker.
Yeah, I think that the river comes, is you start heading west, there's that, you get a lot less.
Right, right, but, I mean, if you can put a garage, you're talking about creating like other structures.
Fair amount of land there, as you get further down is where it's gonna start getting tight. You actually may end up running, well, flood zone's not gonna stop you because it's not a primary structure.
Really?
So it would be an accessory structure, it wouldn't get covered under your flood insurance. So if you lost it in a flood.
Yeah, but you're displacing material by having to dig the for the footing. It's not like flooring on the ground, so I don't know how that would work.
I'd have to, I'd have to relook at the.
Yeah, I don't think it, and plus you'd have the conduit, you're not supposed to run utilities in the flood plain. So I don't think it would be allowed in the flood plain, but that's up to the zoning administrator.
I would have to relook at those.
So if we say it's gotta be behind the house, um do, I mean, does that matter or does the visual, visually, is is, is that really what we're talking about more than, uh, you know, its location of a lot?
Well.
I mean, look, you know, yeah.
Yeah, not, I'm thinking not between the green and the house.
In the front of the house.
In the front of the house, right, I mean, that, because that, you know, right next to the common, you know, the commons. I think there'd be a lot of pushback on that end of town, I think.
Well, so would it be behind the rear wall of the house that it needs to be located or does it need to be? Um, does it need to be just in back of the front of the house, you know, so it could be in the side yard, but does it need to be behind the houses? I guess, that's what I'm trying to say when you say, it's gonna be on the backside, what does that mean?
Right, I know, it's a little.
Visibility, so, yeah. Visibility from the public way.
Yeah, yeah, because if it's right next to the house, it could still be twenty feet from the, from the common, you know, from the road around the common.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's really an aesthetic thing.
Yeah.
So is that visibility, so if you're walking on the backside of the common, you can't look into somebody's yard and see it? I mean, you know, I guess somebody brings up the point about, you know, how you cut trees and all of a sudden something's very visible.
Yeah, I mean, because even if somebody had, someone has one really far in the back behind there, you can still see it.
Right, assuming there's not, nothing blocking your view.
I mean, could, could we put a li- could we put a, a distance limit, I mean, could we say within a hundred feet or something of the, of the common? Or the road around the common?
Well, Brett's Brett's property goes a hundred feet back, so we could, he could put it in a side yard then, right?
Yeah, but you'd have to be a hundred feet away from the road, I don't know.
I mean, well, that, I mean, I don't know, that that seems to me to be arbitrary, um, because we're not really effectuating any, you know, like, what we're worried about is the visual impact, so, um.
Can, can we maybe, so I think we have a question about visual impact and what, what do we want to do? Maybe we should keep moving, I mean, we've noted these two, two concerns, let's keep moving and sort of tick off all the big items.
Yep.
And then we can.
Yeah, because I don't think we're gonna solve that.
There must be other towns that have considered the historic district view.
There are.
We could find some.
Dozens, yes.
Find some good language.
Yep.
Yeah.
Well, and and first of all, what do we want, I mean, that's.
Well, instead of reinventing everything.
Yeah, right.
Find that something that's worked for Colonial Williamsburg.
And what, what is the, what is the real intent here? Are we, are we aiming to have solar so that we can help impact climate change? I mean, in that case, we wanna try and get as much solar as we can and maybe what we need to start thinking about is, well, maybe solar actually looks good to many people. And it gives the, right, and that Lyme is actually trying to do their best to help the impact on the, on the world.
Yep.
My two cents.
I I'm with you, solar, solar installations are beautiful.
Yep, yeah, I am too, so.
Thank you.
Who is this?
Uh, Susan Musty.
Okay. The next point that I, that I noted at the end of John Campbell's note was encouraging group net metering, I don't think that.
It's not a planning board thing, but we're, we're allowing it, you know, because you can do it um with a special exception.
Right, yes.
So, I mean, and I wish that that's what, you know, the solution would be, so it'd be great if both Lyme Center and Lyme Common had a group net metering, so that people didn't have to have individual installations, they could buy into someplace and and then we could run all the lines underground to serve them, but um.
That would be ideal.
Yeah, that would be the.
Put it up on Derby Lane, help behind.
Right, that would be the total best thing, but um, yeah. And I, you know, to John Campbell's point, you know, having a solar installation in the field next to him would change the way things look. But if he could buy into it, then, you know, it would be more of a community thing, I mean, I I totally get that.
Right.
But I wish that we had that opportunity for each one of those historic districts so that it wouldn't be a problem that you get their solar and um not have that installation.
Yeah, and you know, Vicky, that would, I think that would solve, take care of the overhead power lines around the common too.
Well, we'd have to replace all the power lines.
I mean, if it ran underground, if we had a.
Well, we would need to do that, yes.
Right, but I mean, then there wouldn't be any need for any power lines or anything.
I wish we could get rid of them, but, yeah.
So, so are you talking about running power lines from the solar panels to individual people's houses and not using?
Different ones, yes, because Liberty's, are they, is it EverSource or Liberty? Yeah, 'cause Liberty's, were they, was it EverSource or Liberty? The power company on the, on the common.
Oh, Ever, I think it's EverSource.
EverSource, 'cause they've been not very helpful in trying to underground.
Oh, yeah, but, I mean. I, I assume that the net metering we're talking about is something where you.
Going to the grid and.
You go into the grid, and then they suck it out, and, and they're a designated user of the power.
Well, it would be very cool not to have to go through them, 'cause they're not helpful at all.
Oh, right, yeah.
But solve our problems and get these, you know, everyone in the historic districts, you know, green, you know, green energy and.
Yeah, it'd be great, I mean, it's a lot of money to bury everything.
That's, I know.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, so.
So, we have to say, yes, we support the group metering and have accommodated that with the size limit that we put on, and with a special exception, so that people can. Do it, but I don't think we allowed it in, um, in the one common district. In our proposal, is that true? That the large systems couldn't go in the Lyme Common District.
Yeah, that's true.
So, um, so that it actually doesn't work next door to John if he wanted it.
Yeah. I mean, what about the sand pit, I mean, is that? You know, Brett's sand pit, you could put a lot there.
You know, we should put a lot of houses in there. And it'd be nice to have solar there too, but. Hopefully all the houses can have rooftop mounts.
So, looking at the next one from Scott Nichols, he talked about eighteen feet, he was concerned that forty kilowatts is not enough.
Yep.
Wasn't concerned about visual impact.
Yep.
And, there's a couple people that, that made the comment that they thought that this was increasing regulation. Which I guess it kind of is, except right now, it's really hard to know what the rule is at all.
Right, it's, I would consider this more of a defining the regulations, or making the, clarifying regulations, and. In some cases, if you're allowing, um, commercial use outside of the commercial, um, districts. Then it's actually a lessening of the, the requirement restrictions.
Yeah.
So, it's.
Yeah. I mean, it sounds like Scott really doesn't wanna have any regulations on pretty much, I think he.
Mm-hmm.
You know, any regulations at all.
And then the whole thing about the decommissioning, well, we already have it for wind. So, of course, I don't think we have a situation where we've had a decommission plan at all. So hopefully we are up to it, and whenever that would happen.
Do, do you know that, of the big systems that Hanovers put in, have they required decommission plans?
The town did that.
So, okay.
So, no, they didn't, or again, they, then they also didn't go through site plan, they, the town did.
Oh, that's right, the town.
Right.
The, the words you said are literally true, the town did that, so none of the rules apply.
Right, so they didn't go through site plan, they didn't go through the zoning board, there's a lot of stuff that did not happen, because it was a municipal project.
So there's no decommissioning.
I don't know if theirs are not, um, but there's, we, there's not a requirement.
It'll, it'll happen one way or the other.
Well, the decommissioning plan will be, they have a bunch of costs to decommission it. It'll be all blessing, it'll have to tax the, the town, right?
Right.
Yep, okay.
I don't know, they might have set aside something, I, I don't know what the, you know, you might wanna ask that, I don't know, you're listening, talk to Rob.
Yeah.
Just ask him, is there a decommission plan? Municipal solar.
Yep.
If he knows, if there is one, how much is it, he knows that, what percentage of the.
Yeah.
Cost. Of the project.
So, we.
Oh, yeah, and this is where the scenic road thing comes in, do we wanna talk about that now?
Where, which one is that, Vicky?
It's, it's Scott Nichols' last bullet, and I think his point's well taken, is that, you know, the scenic roads, that we don't want them visible from the roads, or access from those roads, or constructed with a certain number of feet from those roads. I mean, it's the same thing, I think, that we talked about with the historic district.
Right, but the, yeah, 'cause initially we talked about the three phase, you know, we didn't really want three phases on the scenic roads, which I. I certainly agree with that.
Well, I think that was, at least my, my consideration was so that the trees didn't have to come down along the scenic road, because that's what makes it scenic, is that canopy of trees, and then, you know, just the girth of the trees. You know, I, I walk on those scenic roads a lot, and.
Well, the only people that can cut trees larger than eight inches in diameter on the scenic roads is the landlord.
Landowner, no, the town can do it, they just come here and basically say, we gotta do it.
Well, there's a dead tree or something, but I don't think.
No, it's not even that there's dead, you know, it's just in the way of maintenance, they can, they can.
Yeah, well, they're not, I mean.
They can get, not get permission, but they can go ahead and do it.
They shouldn't, they shouldn't do it much, unless there's a real need for it.
Well, um, you know, and it's a, a problem with maintenance, that's what happens, and, and the utility companies, the probably worst offender.
Right.
Um, because what, what they do is they've got supposedly a legislated, you know, window that has to be cleared for their power lines to go through.
Right, and they're like on an eight-year cycle or whatever, so they, they have to cut enough so that they won't go back within a couple of years.
Yes, exactly, exactly. So, I guess what is our, I mean, my, my thought was, I didn't want the trees to be, to come down, because we needed new poles and new lines to go through. I didn't contemplate that there would be visible from a scenic road. And then, what if an installation that actually comes off a Class five, or, right, any other road, but it's not scenic, is visible from a scenic road, do we care? And I personally feel, no, because I was concerned about the trees along the scenic road, I would, you know, it's, if it's visible, I like seeing solar, so. That's not my problem, I don't know how others feel.
Right.
So what, what happens though if, um. If, if something larger than the small SES comes in and they wanna build it on a scenic road? And, you know, they, they're being assured by the power company that the power company doesn't have to do pole upgrades. Would they, would they be able to put that project in or not? Does that become a special exception?
It becomes a, well.
I mean, I don't think it should be.
It's a special exception, all large SESs are special exceptions, as we've talked about them. But we haven't done anything about the scenic road, we've just said they're not allowed on a scenic road, and we, and Scott's point is great, we need to find what that means.
Well, what if we just said that we don't allow three phases on a scenic road, and leave it at that, and then.
'Cause we can't regulate roads.
Yeah.
We regulate land use on properties that are off the road.
So we can't say.
No, our zoning doesn't, 'cause the select board regulate the roads. That's why they give them licenses.
The, the power line right of ways are, a lot of them are in the roads, or in the road right of way, and, so you're.
Yeah, no, I mean, there are a lot of cross-country.
Yeah.
Power right of ways in this town, but for the most part, the in-the-road stuff is select board stuff, not us.
Most of the town roads, the landowners on either side own to the center of the road.
Yes.
And the town has a viatic, they call it viatic right of way.
Yes, you're right.
However wide that is.
Yes.
But, yeah, and I don't know how it works with the power companies, I think they must have a separate.
They get, they get pole licenses from the select board. And, you know, they, and on scenic roads, they come here, and otherwise, I don't, if they're just doing trimming on regular roads, they don't even ask you, do they? No, it's just, you know, understood they need to maintain their lines.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's another thorny issue, are we gonna, have to think about that?
What, what's, which issue?
Well, the, whether. The solar on scenic roads, whether, whether you care whether they're seen from the road, or, you know, whether we want to have three phases on those roads, I mean, it's. I don't know.
Well, I told you what I feel, and I don't know how everybody else feels, so how do you feel about that? How do you feel?
I feel that, I think it would be really too bad to have all new three-phase poles put on the scenic roads.
Okay, so you're, but if somebody didn't have to have that, could they have a large, um, solar installation on their property that was fronting on the scenic road?
Yeah, I think so.
And it was visible from the scenic road?
Yep.
I mean, I'm just asking Tim how he feels, so it's okay, so you're.
I mean, that's okay, but I just, yeah, I just wouldn't wanna see three-phase poles, you know, right, going right down a whole scenic road.
Well, I think, I think Vicky's point, I mean, I, I, once again, Vicky, I find myself agreeing with you, that, that. That the tree canopy is pretty special, and I would be ashamed to lose that.
Yeah, 'cause that's really the, the thing you said, the scenic road.
Right, I mean, that's the whole, if I'm understanding right, that's the whole point of a scenic road, and that.
That and the stone walls, you're not supposed to mess with the stone walls.
Right, on a scenic road.
On a scenic road, stone walls and the trees, yeah.
Doesn't the landowner have a right to do both of those things?
Absolutely, yep.
Right, yeah.
But it's, it's like to keep towns from unnecessarily messing with the stone walls and trees, and keep the utility companies from taking down trees if they don't have to.
Yeah, the keeping the road easers from sort of arbitrarily saying, well, we're gonna widen this road three feet on each side.
Yep.
Just 'cause we wanna make it wider.
Yep, yep.
But it is kinda funny to say, well, you, you landowner could cut down all the trees and do whatever you want, but we won't let you put.
Well, this is New Hampshire.
Why don't you, uh, put a solar, a solar installation, 'cause we don't want you to cut down the trees?
I mean, the, the person could cut down trees on their frontage, but not anybody else's.
Right, yeah, 'cause we're saying we don't want the three-phase poles going, you know, right down the road, and for a long way.
So, so, yeah, once, once the, the landowners have made their road non-scenic, then.
Well.
Then maybe they can, uh, come in and.
Right, I don't envision that, I, I don't envision that happening, well, I mean, if it's, if they made it non-scenic, then, then that's, but. So, but let's, how, how do we write words that, that honor the trees, that protect the tree canopy and stone walls?
Well, it's the scenic road rule that protects them, and what we're just saying is like, we're trying not to have them threatened by have, by allowing. A use that would require a three-phase power to be installed.
Right.
So that's, that's what we're doing, is trying, you know, preemptively trying to keep that from being in conflict.
Do. I'm thinking, I mean.
But, you know, Rich's point is a good one, so what if they don't have to have new poles and new wires? How about it then, and so I think we could say that.
Yeah.
That a large installation would be okay, um, if, if, uh, on a scenic road, if there wasn't gonna be new. New poles and the wires.
You, you could say something to the effect of, you know, large SESs that require upgrades to the utility lines on a scenic road are prohibited.
Huh, yeah, that's a good way to put it.
Yep.
Or that just degrade the view from the scenic road.
Right, I mean, that, that's kind of interesting, because it's like, oh, oh, okay, we'll just run it down the backyards of the, of the, the homes here.
Right.
Then, I mean, you have to get permission from everybody to do it, but if they're all on the group net metering, and, you know, they, they want to.
It depends on what the, the utility easement, um, I am not entirely familiar with the, the New Hampshire easements, but I know. A majority of the Vermont easements, it does not, um, you have an easement on your property that says a utility company can place poles on your property, and that's about. Where it ends, it doesn't define where they can, and so they can put them pretty much anywhere they want.
So that was a really good thing you just said, David, but.
I think you said large SESs that require new three-phase power.
I said upgraded utilities.
Upgraded, okay, well.
And, because, uh, I'm trying, you know, I cover a little bit more than just.
Upgraded ut, upgraded.
Utility poles or?
Utility poles, um.
But that wouldn't preclude putting new ones in not on the road, right?
Right, it would just say that, you're, you're saying you can't build a large SES if you have to upgrade your utility poles along a scenic road.
Along a scenic road, right.
If they are not going down a scenic road, then you're welcome to put the, the solar station in.
I don't know if it's legal.
I have no idea if it's legal, though.
We can ask, uh, Inspector Morgan, and, and she says it's not legal, we'll have to figure another way to skin this guy.
Yeah, no, that's, that's good.
And. Doesn't allow us to use, like, a way to also deal with ground mounted in the historic district, that is hoping that we could figure out a way that. We'd have the same solution for both, but this works for this, and we'll just have to go back to the historic district.
Yeah. Getting to David, David Coates's, um, uh, note of. He had the question, like many people, about visual impact, and I don't think he was really. Knew what he wanted. You know, and could envision somebody being unhappy. And, and what are put in it.
Yeah, well, he also says, for, for that matter, any structure, and, you know, it's too cumbersome to have every structure reviewed, and.
Right.
So, to his point, you know, sorry, but a tracker is just like another structure, and ugly house or an ugly barn, and so. Everybody should not have input into something like that. So.
Yeah, yep.
But it's good that he asks. Okay, and then we've just decided it can be visible from the road, as long as the utilities don't have to be upgraded, so.
Do you think there's gonna be people who are upset by the notion that along a scenic road, we're gonna allow someone to potentially just wipe out all the trees altogether and put a large installation, as long as it doesn't necessitate changing the poles?
Uh, and they could do it anyway, for any reason, I mean, they could put a polo field in there, or a, um, you know, a huge lawn.
Yeah, 'cause they're allowed to cut the trees.
Yep.
And the landowner.
And actually, we can't, you, in New Hampshire, you can't regulate tree cutting, the state does that, so. We can't tell someone they can't cut trees on their property.
No, but we could tell them they can't put a large solar array, but.
We could say that, and we have said that in certain districts. I mean, I guess then it comes to how many properties are impacted on scenic roads. I mean, we don't have that many scenic roads.
What, what are they, you know, you know?
Yeah, we need a list of them before.
I got it.
Yeah, you've got it on your.
We have it in the file.
Yeah.
It is Acorn Hill, Breck Hill Road, Hybridge Road, Washburn Hill, Pyco, River Road North, and parts of Orford Hill.
Right.
Yeah. And I think the power lines on Pyco are actually not in the road, they're across country.
Yep.
Right. Yeah, they're probably, they have to co-op.
Yep.
Yeah. So in that case. The verbiage could allow people to put in a big installation.
The, the restriction that we, that David suggested.
The, yeah, that's, right, the restriction.
Which I think would be fine.
I do too.
Yep. I mean, that's certainly true on. A large portion of Orford Road Road two, power line runs.
Back.
Back behind fifty or a hundred feet from the road, you know. So.
Well, do we want to, like, then say, are prohibited along a scenic road where power lines are in the road right of way? To allow?
I mean, I like the, I like the. The required up, uh, solar energy systems that require upgrades to utility poles along scenic roads. So it's the.
So are prohibited along scenic roads where power lines are in the road right of way?
Power lines were not allowed on scenic roads. I thought that was the whole point.
No, they, they are allowed, but there, there are some special rules that the, our companies have to follow when they want to trim the lines. They actually have to come to the planning board with a plan.
When I go along them, that seems to be the common thing that there, there aren't poles.
I think in a lot of cases there aren't.
Yeah.
But there are some.
Yeah, if they think the poles were there long before, the roads were designated scenic.
Well, looking at the scenic roads, there's not a lot of potential for, uh, solar.
Why is that?
Just because there's not a lot of south facing slopes.
Well, let's leave it at that with the, with the, you know, for the scenic roads that are, where the power lines are in the road right of way.
Right.
And that, that solves that question. I think that's, that's good. So I don't think that people who've got small properties should be discriminated against. To the, you know, point about if someone has a quarter acre property, a few options for solar and it's right next to the neighbor's kitchen or bedroom window. Well, if you can put another, if you can put a shed there, you should be able to put the solar there.
So that would be a special exception maybe if they, if they're within the setback?
Uh, we said that it's like any other, other structure. So if they need a special exception for.
For the setback, I expect.
Yeah, yeah.
And then if they went to the ZDA, the neighbors would be notified.
Yes.
Yep.
It gives the neighbor a good opportunity to complain. Or suggest another option. I mean, because I can totally see where, if they were putting it there, and they actually had another place on the property that wouldn't impact the neighbor as much. I mean, hopefully the zoning board would say, well, come on, you can put it there. So deny them. One that is offensive to the neighbor.
Yeah, I don't know. I did not, that's why I left their email address because that's the only thing that they provided me.
Well, it doesn't matter who it is, if they give us.
I mean, I just said it is identification.
Somebody signed it as Tracy.
Yep.
So, so do we want to tackle kilowatt size? Talk about that? There's been a lot of discussion here about whether forty kilowatts.
Too big, too small.
Yep.
Ray, Ray Clark thinks it's too big.
Yeah.
Other people think it's.
Yeah, I know, which means if we get things on both sides, I think that we hit it about right. I mean, it, you know, it's, it's a cutoff and there was also a suggestion that we have three categories. And, you know, I think we should stay with two because it's simpler and it just gets more complex with three. So, I don't know, does anybody feel like four hundred's too small?
No.
I mean, to the, the woman who's already up against, you know, with her, everything's on, on electricity. I think that if we get a lot of people bumping up against that, that we'll need to bump it up.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I think, I think it's fine for now and as we said, it can be changed if there's a problem in the future.
So, just for, for clarity, Vicki, you were talking about forty kilowatts for the small. Is that right?
Didn't we say?
Up to forty.
Up to forty, yes.
Yes, that's right.
Why didn't you say four hundred?
Because I thought I heard you say four hundred.
No, 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 forty for the small.
Now, if I remember going back great, that the, the letter said forty kilowatts, not because you were limiting the production, but because you were limiting what you felt the size.
That's right.
Now, so my question is, is that, are you setting a total size on the lot? So let's say you have, you know, you put in a tracker today that is thirty eight kilowatts. Does that preclude you from putting in another tracker at a, based on lot coverage? If you have room for that lot, on the lot for that, does that prevent you from putting in another tracker that would provide you another thirty eight kilowatts?
Well, I think. I think at that point it goes, gets reviewed.
Right, because that, that would be the same thing as if somebody has a huge house and everything's electric and they need more, then they would have to go.
But I thought we weren't trying to limit the size of the structure.
Well, that's what I'm asking, but, but.
So why would we allow them to have two?
Well, because your lot coverage and your footprint for that particular lot allows it. So you could have two sheds.
Yeah, but what about the person who just says fix solar and, you know, so we're, we're limiting them?
Yeah, well, that's, that's the question I'm asking is, you know, that's how I'm going to have to answer people when it comes up. So, you know, that's, I'm just trying to be very clear that.
Yeah, well, I thought it was based on just the size of the structure, no matter what.
Yeah, so you're allowed to put up enough solar panels to hit forty kilowatts or you'll just, well, that'll be translated into the ordinance up to a size instead of a kilowattage.
Yes.
So you're allowed to put that much solar panel on a lot and that is it.
Give me the square footage of the solar.
You can put it on your hat, on the roof and then in, you know.
Yeah, that's just.
And hopefully the technology will get better and better so that, so that, you know, in ten years, you know, nobody will have a problem with that limitation for the size of the structure.
It doesn't matter to me in any way, shape or form. I'm just, I, I want to make sure it's clear in, in the amendment and it's clear when I have to deal with it.
Well, I thought it was really the size of the structure.
That's, yeah, we kind of backed into the, we, we use kilowatts as, as something that tangible that people can understand.
Right, and that's where.
And so we're going to translate it back into the square footage.
Which makes perfect sense for, I just, I wanted to make sure we were all.
Yeah, and as Vicki said, hopefully in fifteen years, the same square footage, you could get eighty kilowatts.
Only five years.
Yeah, five years, you get eighty kilowatts.
But, but to, to your point, so say you have seven kilowatts on your roof. I don't know how much a roof will hold, seven or.
It's easy to put seven. I have seven on my roof.
Yeah, so say you do that and then you come in and you want to put in another thirty five as fixed amount. Thirty five would work because it's less than forty and we're just, and we're not even considering the solar on the roof.
Right, right. That's what I understand, but I just want to be, make sure I understand.
And just for my clarity, we're saying that if you have forty kilowatt array and you have tons of lot coverage available, you could not put a second forty in?
Right.
Okay, just.
Unless you went through the process.
You go through a large, you go through a large installation.
You could bring it in under the small.
Yeah.
Right, it's, it's not each individual, there's a, a limit to the amount of solar panel, the square footage of solar panels allowed on a lot. Not allowed by a individual array of those solar panels. And that's where, you know, we've got to be careful with the terminology to make sure that we're.
Right. So do we have any more from the Tracy or are we beyond that?
No.
Tracy?
The PMO, I think we're going to, we kind of address those separately, right? And then the next one, the person thinks we've got too large a limit for small.
Well, it's good because it's good to hear that voice counterbalancing some of these others and say it's, it's not doing enough. So.
I do agree with Ray and he talks about large systems could be done on, you know, the Tensin Farm or in Brett's pit. And they would be pretty much out of sight.
Well, isn't the Tensin Farm, that's conserved.
I believe they're.
For the one that's in the, in the village district and the rest of the fields are open. So you can put it out in those fields, assuming, you know.
And he would be getting out of the, the district anyway, so that one.
So he's got plenty of opportunity there.
It's just the, you know, the pit is a.
The pit is a resource that should be used for housing in my, my personal, personal opinion and we need homes in there.
I think you, you don't have any disagreement with the owner either on that.
Right, so, I mean, if, if only for that reason, let's.
Has the pit been exhausted? I mean.
Yeah, it had been exhausted years ago.
Kimmy took a lot out, I think.
I think it was before him.
I think that there's, like, actually the water table is pretty high there, which may be the problem with putting in, like, lots of housing because there's.
Yeah, septic, I think, would be an issue.
Well, they're going to probably have to have a community system, you know.
It's weird that the water table would be high there.
That's because they took out all the gravel until they got down to, like, it got wet and they couldn't dig anymore. They always, there'd be a bigger hole.
Probably hit a clay.
Clay lens, yeah.
Clay lens underneath it, which I think if you look at this whole area here, you, there's gravel on top of a, a clay layer and that clay layer just pushes all the water out into that field or wetlands out there.
Okay, is there anything else in that message, in that note? I think the next one is.
Balanced by the following one, TT and BB. Let's have them talk it out over a beer.
Right. Well, I mean, Tom, Tom Turkington's note is, it's like, yeah, sure. Doesn't, he said that he's glad to see that we don't look like we're trying to make it too hard. And then the following message says, you're, you're making it too hard.
And he was looking at some of what, so following message, you know, the reward is, you know, other non-residential structures. Well, non-residential structures aren't allowed in most of the, in most lots, so.
I think he meant accessory structures or something. So he just used it along with this.
So the next one is, we need twenty, oh, not, not quite. Twenty is, is better. And then he's okay with eighteen feet.
Free with hearings and.
Right, yeah.
I think forty KW is too much.
Yes.
Yeah, he says it's way generous. I could have twenty.
And it, I mean, we all agree, it is very generous, but.
Except for the person, the next one with, or the person with a three thousand square foot house. Must be hitting the outdoors. I don't, it's just, well, it's mind blowing, right?
I mean, I cheat, I use, I use fuel oil, you know. It's like you just turn up the thermostat and, you know, the level in the tank goes down, like, the house gets warmer.
I guess that, you know, when we had someone from the Energy Committee and I was kind of being led to believe that it didn't, it didn't take forty kilowatts to heat a house.
Well, I think Eric, Eric Firstberg was saying, he has ten kilowatts and he said that's, you know, plenty for his house and for, for people in his house.
But is that, is he heating his house electrically?
Yeah, I don't think so. That's the difference. He doesn't have a electric car, so. But still, he, yeah, forty does seem plenty for that.
And again, if we find that we're bumping up against that all the time, I mean.
Right. I mean, I think this is what, where we want to, we already said, this is where we want to have a special exception. That if somebody says, I really, really need forty five, that, that we can give guidance to the zoning board to say, just do it.
But we're also saying that we're doing it by the size.
Yeah, we're doing it by the size, yeah.
If the technology gets better, then, you know.
Hopefully nobody will get more kilowatts on the same side, so.
There may never be a problem, really.
Yep.
So this next note, maybe he's making a distinction between single users and, and people sharing even of, of a small system? I'm not, not quite sure what they were asking.
Are we, which one are you on the?
Uh, this is, uh, that Firstberg's.
Well, I, I think, yeah, there, yeah, there probably will be some group projects that would have to come in under the larger category.
Yep, and that's the point.
And that's the whole point of it.
Yep. Well, it seems like, thank you so much for making our little PR piece. It seems like people understood what we were trying to communicate because all these questions are kind of like right on. Nobody's like, you know, totally misunderstanding, so. And obviously because it looks so nice, they read it. So thank you so much, right? No, 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 no.
Yes, right. Okay, so thank you for your input, man.
Yep, and so we're going to have some no votes. And also this about, you know, doing the house, you know, and.
And do we know this, this person that is doing the noes, is that no because I don't want regulation or no because I don't want to see this?
We don't know.
No, no, I actually know her. I could call, uh, call her and find out.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think we really want to be singling out anybody on the basis of their comments.
Yeah, because you could, it could be ready either way. I mean.
Yes, yeah, and everybody else elaborated, so.
Well, it's just, you know, the eighteen foot thing, no, well, does that mean eighteen foot, two inches is good or is it seventeen foot, ten inches good? You know, it's hard to know which side of the fence that she was trying to fall on.
Right, so I'll, I may just call her because I know her.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to get a little bit of background on what the, what the concern was.
Concerns are. The final one is the people with the three thousand square foot house. There were two things, I think it's, it's very instructive to see that the forty kilowatt might just be apparently a.
Right, yeah.
I think the other observation is that in the first sentence, regarding increased, feedback regarding increased regulation of solar energy systems. And so as we talk about this, we need to talk about clarifying the rules so that we really want people to do this.
Right, well, the other thing she doesn't talk about is that like if she has any on, on the roof, there's still plenty of ground mount ability for her. So it's actually not limiting.
Well, I mean.
Assuming we could put some on our roof.
But it's close. I mean, it, it's, it's useful, this is a useful data point for us.
Oh, it's very useful.
To say, okay, so a bigish house, but not ten thousand square foot house, might use all of a forty kilowatt array. So, so this is good.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, I'm glad that we got that perspective.
I have a suggestion for what to do with all of this information.
What's that?
Some of it's repetitive, obviously, but there's themes here.
Yes.
You could construct a response, you know, a follow-up to this public request for input that is showing due diligence on consideration of theirs by just having a series of question and answers. which includes perhaps a scenario for this person with the big house and, you know, and then some of the other issues that people have raised about scenic and historic. You could, you could really easily be seen to be answering their concerns and clarifying any points.
Can we do another questionnaire or?
No, 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 we would provide a Q and A, not kind of sheet, saying, here's the question, is eighteen feet really a good height?
And where did it come and say, and that gives you a chance, instead of having to write into the audience, ordinance, we did it because Hanover did it. You know, that's that's not the answer. It's it's come, the number comes from.
It was researched and, yeah.
Yeah.
You know, that's a good idea, yeah.
And, I mean, that's something that we can, we can draft that, put the together all the, our answers or our thoughts to this feedback, thanks, everybody. Make sure that everybody that mailed anything in gets a copy, put it on a list, put it on, you know.
Put it on the, where the minutes from the planning board go.
Yep, yep, that's, it's a good thought, Phoebe, thank you. It was a lot less painful than I thought it would be.
Well, I think it's important to circle back with people.
Oh, yes.
I'd rather circle back in that way than have them be really irate, like, go to a public hearing and, you know, you didn't listen to me and, and, you know, say, oh, you actually did. And, you know, to your point, we had, you know, people who felt the other way and we decided to compromise and knowing, you know, we're doing what we think is best, we're able to, what we've had, so.
Yep.
Yeah, I think it's, I feel fairly optimistic. I think we're pretty close. I mean, we seem like we're, we're all sort of on the same page for most of this and we just have to write, write something up.
Well, then, no.
That is where I'm saying.
Yeah, well, we had it mostly drafted, just we didn't wanna present people with a legalese and which no one can relate, you know, so the way Phoebe, you know, I think the narrative was there, you know, Phoebe's formatting looked looked like you wanna read it, not like it was something from the planning board.
Right.
Yeah. Right.
Well, I wonder if your minutes are kind of topical like that, that based on what we get for minutes, that we could then do the Q and A based on that?
I can try to.
Yeah, eighteen feet was discussed.
Yep, I have the those topics all discussed.
Yeah, 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 so we can probably draw that almost from your minutes. That'll be like the first draft and then, I think John is a really good, careful writer and then maybe he would take that and and move it forward to the next draft or at least a readable one and something like that, so.
Yeah, John is good at.
Yeah, he's a good writer.
Yeah, that's what he does, that's what he did, he writes books, right?
I know, isn't that funny?
Children's books, but still.
Well, that's even better.
And children's books, zoning ordinance.
Write it in explainable terms, understandable, right?
So the next step would be to get the minutes approved for next time and the Q and A can come out of that and need to get that distributed at least to all these people and put it on the listserv and actually we should have it on the website for anyone who wants to follow up on what's going on with that. And then I think we, I think we know what we wanna have in the amendment, so we can actually work, start working on finalizing that.
Yeah, do do we have a copy of where we left off with the amendment? I mean, where is that? Because I was kind of looking at it.
I've got it all.
I'm not sure I had it, but it'd be great if we can distribute that.
You referred to one, Ricky, from last year?
Yeah, yeah. You know, you can't lick your finger when you have a mask on.
I don't know where that is either, Rich. I've got all this stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, I was looking for.
Well, David probably has that.
Yeah, maybe between David and John.
And then at some point, we're gonna have to write.
Distribute that to us.
或者其他用?
Here, I've got. And we have Rich's quotes, um, piece, and we've got the, we have ones like this.
Oh, okay, then you have to get that.
October.
Because I have something delivered tonight.
Okay, well, it's, I think we, that's when we probably, just, I don't know when we decided we weren't gonna go to town meeting, but.
January.
January, okay, so probably something up until January. I've got an October twenty-first, Rich Brown thing.
So I'm sending everybody a copy of the, let me make sure I grab the right file. Yep, it is the the copy that would have gone in the warrant.
Oh, good.
So all formatted and.
Nice, so we should work on that for next time in terms of moving this along. And, you know, did members of the Energy Committee get these comments?
No, they did not.
Because I think we should send them to them, just so that they, because, I mean, they were involved with writing the master plan chapter and I think they would be interested in what are, you know, what people in town have shared us.
I'll send them to the chair.
Can I make one, one suggestion? Dave, if you go through and number each comment, just give sequentially, not trying to reorder it in any way, but just really typing like one, two, then it will shorten the discussion.
Yes, because people can refer back to.
Exactly, instead of having to say, you know, the one that was after the one that David Coats said.
Yep.
I think it'd be better if we don't use people's names.
Yes, I think maybe it should be off them.
I can, you know, I, I, some people get very unhappy if names are removed because they're like, well, I wanna make sure my comments got given to the board and I can then say, here is what was given.
Yeah.
So, but I can take them out and.
And then when, then we do Q and A, you can have, well, this question covers comments four, seven and thirteen.
Yeah, nobody gave us permission to share this with the world, so I wanna respect confidentiality.
Yeah, for sure.
Well, that's interesting, and yet it is, I think by definition, it's a public document.
It is.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, but it's a public document, which somebody can say, okay, I wanna know who those people were, but I don't think we wanna be in the business of publishing people's names and how they feel about.
What I'll do is I will take and take names out and just.
Number them.
Number them.
Adding names is just gonna generate more heat than light.
Well, yes, that's.
I totally agree.
Absolutely, if that's, if it's going, well, like, anything I put out, if it goes on the website, I don't include people's names because there are people who mine websites for that type of information, so that's why I refuse to put the, um, electric car documents that the solar, that the Energy Committee wants, they would like that out on the website. I won't put it out there because I don't want people mining personal information from the residents of.
Right, well, thank you, appreciate that.
I mean, there's enough information out there.
Yeah, they already know it all, but, yeah, I don't wanna read and confirm it.
Doesn't have to be from us, so wherever possible, I don't.
Well, good, I think, yeah, next meeting, we can really start maybe writing something up and and I think we should definitely try to finish this, finish the solar before we get into housing.
Right, well, I think we can still be in, like, I did not get from the Regional Planning Commission their favorite master plan chapter. I checked, it was, you know, latest this afternoon and they hadn't sent me anything, so I don't know if that means they're still looking or there is some, nothing, but I I'll follow up with them. But they're involved in housing, like, all the time, and they just did this other follow-up questionnaire for the regional housing study and, which is in addition to Keys for the Valley, so, I mean, hopefully they'll have one. I bet you they don't, but who can they do?
I, to add to that, I sent the note out to Plan Link to say, is anybody got a housing chapter for a small town, no water and sewer, mostly rural, and I got four responses just today.
Oh, good.
So, I mean, basically, here you go, Rich, here's a link to Tufton Borough, Washington, Charlestown, who said, it's not quite the same, but.
Charlestown has water and sewer.
Yeah. Yeah, they probably.
Well, they definitely do.
But they said it's an awesome housing chapter, so. It's like, okay, they wanted to brag, because I said, I said they got extra points of, extra credit if they they wanted to include a sentence about the best part or the part they felt worst about.
So Tufton Borough, Charlestown, what was the other one? Washington.
Washington and freedom.
Freedom, oh, my gosh.
Yes.
Okay.
So.
We should all read those.
I will, I, I'll wait a day or two and then throw them all over.
Send me the links and I will forward them to everyone. I did send out the link from the Keys to the Valley to their, where they have all their data.
Yep.
There are several different pieces of data and there was nothing I could really download.
No, it's all on the website, so you have to go there and be inquisitive and go take a look and see what they have, but that's, you know, in terms of data, good, good information.
I don't know if everybody has the report, but I was looking for the, um, the housing report that was done a few years ago. What was that one called?
Is that the, um, the one the Planning Board did, the.
Workforce Housing Study?
Well, I I have the Planning Board, Lion Housing Report, the preliminary draft report that was talking about workforce housing.
Were you interested in housing?
Is there a date on that?
When it puts out, it doesn't, I think it was two thousand thirteen.
Okay, yes, right.
But there, the, that, the report that we had a consultant do.
That that was the Community Development Committee? Yeah, the Lion Community Development Committee.
Yeah, I couldn't find that.
I sent a link or I sent it a copy of it. Let me look back in my email.
You sent a copy?
Is that on the website? It should be.
It is on the website.
Yeah.
I have a hard time finding anything.
Yeah.
I don't know where it looks.
Not user friendly, unfortunately.
This is, this is the, the whole thing?
That's the whole thing, yeah.
Okay, there's a ton more data that, that, we'd be welcome to have that, I.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, the, um, my email from last Tuesday, or from Tuesday, the twenty-first, two days ago, there were three attachments, the agenda, the minutes and the the final report from the Planning Board and the LCDC.
Yeah, I didn't get.
I got it.
You didn't? You didn't get it, Rich? I don't think I got that either, David. I wonder what happened.
Spam.
Yeah, check your spam folders because, yeah, Rich, you're you're on the list and both, you and Tim, I can see.
Oh, yeah, well, usually I get everything you said, but I don't think I get that.
Well, Rich, you said you had something going through your spam folder also.
The agenda and minutes for this meeting.
Yeah, so check your spam folders because it could have been something I said in the, the, uh,
Okay.
thing tripped, spam filters and.
I haven't sent you enough messages, David, so it says, oh, you don't really care.
Yeah, it's in my spam folder too.
Oh, there you go. I must have said something.
Something outrageous like agenda or minutes.
Or final report.
Yeah, I thought I lost the minute, but maybe.
No, it it's probably in your spam folder.
It's in your spam folder, because I didn't get them either.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, great.
Either that or all my email now is marked as spam, which.
Well, sometimes we do a group email, that happens.
Yeah, I have, you know, it's a standard list that I, but I think there might be just something in the.
Different mailers will say that Dave Robbins is trusted or not trusted.
And you can send on your service to, you know, send me as trusted. I will.
Right, yeah.
But anyway.
I think, I think that was, it's a good discussion. I think we made some progress.
I think we made a lot of progress.
Yeah. Good.
Well, you did a good job.
Mr. Vice Chair, would you entertain a motion to adjourn?
Um, I would.
Second?
I would. Great. Well, I have a lot to think about for next time.
Well, what's the process for all the decks?